Right, yeah, basically, we just came down to, you know, we know what's disgusting about the bridge there in Burnedale and the location of it. Basically, we know, you guys know that we checked the ordinance, everything, Washington Street and nine ATV road at this time. So according to the ordinance, all you would have to do is a resolution to make that road from where the bridge coming across down to the sport, to the township property there. You'd only have to do a resolution to make that ATV road, you would only have to do that lower section. You wouldn't have to do the whole road, for sure, you wouldn't need to do that. Because it's already, you already have an ordinance in the township, all you have to do is do a resolution to make that section ATV allowed, was all. And that's basically why we're here, just to see if you guys are gonna go for that, because we, you know, we just, you know, we've discussed, we've gotta nail down that location. So we can go forward with getting the permitting and the engineering, and permits applied for it. Carter or Carter that road, I think?
Depending on which end of ATVs are coming in from a Make the Old Street ATV.
Well, the idea is to bring.
Some would be coming off the hill, too.
Trail's gonna, their trail that they're trying to build comes down Cleveland, it's gonna cross over there by Shattuck, go behind the ball fence. And then take a head and cross the street.
We've got the riders from another end of town, they're gonna have to come down the highway, get on the train, and then go back.
But they're not legal to do that.
None of that's open legally, so they don't access, I mean, legally is Cleveland.
They'll still do it anyhow.
Well, yeah, they do it now, but we're trying to make it legal and make it.
Right, as part of the.
Now that we can mark it as a legal place.
Why can't the path go like where the enforcement building is and avoid the road altogether?
Well, that's what we set out to do, if you wanna discuss that.
Yeah, what happens is when you, like, we wanted to try to keep it away from the park as much, that's why we want it outside of the ball field. What happens is when you get out around that ball field fence line out there, you get real close to the creek. And once you start getting close to the creek, now that opens up a whole nother can of worms with DEP and everybody. Not saying it couldn't be done, but it does, it does open up a lot more. And if we go with the rock, we kinda said that comes right over there, we're staying away from the park altogether, except from the outside of the ball field.
I'm more concerned about the people who live in houses over there.
Right, and the only two, you're only gonna go by two houses, that's why we, it's down the street so far, the only two houses would be, what's it, Debbie, you guys know that?
Debbie and her son, actually, I did speak to Debbie already about it. And she, where it's more potential, where you wanna do it, that's no problem there. I didn't speak to Paul.
And some of the other things, it's in the flood zone, the further you go down, believe it or not, the worse the flood plain gets. And up there, we'll have an eighty-foot bridge, down there, we'll have, not that it makes a big difference, except cost, but when we get down, for the bridge has to end up being a hundred and twenty-some feet. The things have to be ten foot out of the ground, up there, we're only talking five feet out of the ground, you know what I mean, there's a lot of differences and stuff.
If they cross down below, they're gonna have to actually build up, you know, to get.
And I mean, and we're gonna go after the grant to do all this, but if we can try to keep it, maintain it, and you know what I mean? And plus, if we go down by the park, we're gonna have, we're gonna put a fence up all the way down through there, which is fine, but this way, it would keep everybody totally away from the park. So I mean, that's.
Keeps them away from the actual park equipment.
Yeah.
Stay behind the outfield fence, and then before you even get to the flagpole that's out there in like center field, that's where it starts to make the crossing to the bridge, you know? So it actually, and then that bridge will be dual purpose.
Yeah, bridge, just for you to walk and then make it across to get to the park.
You know, if these guys are worried about erosion near the stream, there's a run, all you have to do is chip it and then lay some covering on the top and chips and you'll be good. So you know that, all the traffic erosion with the muddy water running into the pristine stream there?
Quite a few years ago there, I mean, there was a bridge proposed down there, I think the abutment was like still parched, maybe standing.
Oh, okay, I, we didn't see anything, but.
For just to walk for kids' stuff to come back?
Yeah, I think they were gonna try it up.
Yeah.
It was originally gonna be big enough, but what happened, it got, the water got to it, probably about twenty years ago.
Yesterday, bro, where was the time?
Yeah, it was here to the enforcement's building itself.
It was actually just about where the probion is, or right below that, where that narrow was right down there, it went across there. I don't know if it's still part of the abutment, but part of the abutment on that highway side was still there.
Oh, that might be what we did see down, remember I said.
It was the concrete.
It was stone and.
Yeah, there was a, there was a concrete square down there.
Yeah, was on the highway side.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's where it was, and then.
Yeah, and now, you know, what it's like today now, too, though, with permitting and DEP, it's a total different ballgame now.
Oh, no, I know, I didn't, I didn't know you guys knew that.
No, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
On that, we have no new business, though, if we work on the resolution.
Anything else, Tony?
That's, that's all, for now, that's where we're at, we're going, you know, wanna go forward, trying to get this permitting going. I did talk to Rosebud, their legal team's already, they're, they just haven't finalized how they're gonna do it, but they're giving us that legal right away like they said they would. They're just, they're just coming up with the, do they wanna lease it to us, do they wanna just give it the right away for, you know, whatever, they're just coming up with the right legal terms to put it. But they said they're, that's the one board I just talked to here this week.
Where you guys not at on the bottom road, John?
Say that again, yeah?
Where, where's the rock actually gonna be on the bottom?
You're gonna come, oh, when you get over here, you're gonna come out on Apple Street, right there by the power line, you know where the power line is? That's where it's gonna come up, gonna go by the coke ovens.
So that's where John and Rosebud split there, right?
Right, John, right, John comes over to the power line there, and then Rosebud starts on the other side. And so there, we're gonna be coming up by the power line there on Rosebud's side, and we're gonna come down by the coke ovens, we're gonna try to, we're go, actually, also gonna go after like a grant for the coke ovens. So we can make that as a place for people to see, you know, and stuff like that, too, so.
I think they already have that tied up, don't they?
I think I had told you that, I think the.
Historicals. Historicals, sorry, I already have that tied up.
They, they did, they do not, that's not, that's not back.
Okay, did you speak to them?
Remember, he had said he thought they did, but no, they didn't tie it, yeah, it is not.
Tied it.
Yeah, he said they signed it over to the, signed it over to them.
Somebody wrote that all down, somebody wrote all down through.
I think Kenny Ollman, who, when they reclaimed that, he all fought to keep them coke ovens.
Yeah, he thought they, he had actually thought the gentleman was here at that meeting, he had actually thought they had signed it over to the historical thing, and they did not.
Right, they just saved them, they just didn't demolish them.
Right, they just didn't destroy it, correct.
So who owns those coke ovens, Sam?
The property.
Rosebud.
Be Rosebud.
We'll have to have a little chat with Chris and talk to him about that CEO.
Okay, let's move on, let's approval of the minutes from the monthly meeting of August twentieth, twenty twenty, eleven minutes and questions.
I did talk to Randy Medezing about the five-point syrup, and he worked on it the following week, said he couldn't tell it in schedule, but it's not the.
Yeah, they did, they did work up there, yeah.
Any other comments, questions about the minutes from the August twentieth meeting? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Right, motion.
Yeah. All is in favor, all right, okay, carry on. Okay, who's the next to call this, Joe?
Well, I have a few questions, though.
Go for it.
I was wondering how these guys made out the meeting on Smith Hill Road there? I guess there's something to do with Rosebud on that, too?
How, 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 how the meeting.
Yeah, okay, I understood that Rosebud would like to have access to Smith Hill, purchase it, or wherever, wherever the rumor says. Not the downwind.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the rumor they're having right now, we haven't heard anything from them, so.
Right. Also, are these guys satisfied with your new UTMC plan right now?
I don't think any of you did, I know, but.
What is the deductible on the gold plan compared to the platinum plan?
We didn't have a deductible on the platinum plan, deductible is fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
But we opened a health reimbursement account, that was called ADR, and it still saves the township almost thirty thousand a year.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Anything more, Joe?
Well, nothing right at the moment.
Move on, Bobby?
Yeah, I have an open records request, and the request was all records, communications, including emails, responses to emails, documents, et cetera. Regarding the merging of the J Township Water and Sewer Authority. Well, one of the sentences in the response, in the denial is, as an initial matter, the requests are insufficiently specific. So as to inform the township records you are seeking, what don't you understand?
What was the rest of the response?
Well, you got the same letter I did.
Okay, I don't have it here in front of me.
Well, you want me to read the whole thing, I mean, it's a lot of.
I mean, is it, is that the letter that you gave, that our solicitor gave to us? So, we had to pay the solicitor for the response, and we asked her what we could give to you, you got the memo, correct? And the involvement.
Yes, I did, but the point here is, once again, as an initial matter, the requests are insufficiently specific. So as to inform the township records you are seeking, the request was to the township, your response is, you don't know what records I'm seeking. What don't you understand? Which, which records you're talking about? It's a minute, you have some records.
Yes, but you got the memo that we were allowed to give you, the memo on what your, what your.
I'll agree the decision is yours, what you can get.
Uh, and.
Now, in the request, all records, communications, to include responses to emails, documents, et cetera. Regarding the merging of the J Township Water and Sewer Authorities. So as a member of the public, I want to understand or get information on merging the authorities. And to gain an understanding, I think it would be helpful to have access to files and records, so I could read them. And in your response, you're saying, as an initial matter, the requests are insufficiently specific. So as to inform the township or records you are seeking. So for the third time, what don't you understand? What's, what are you looking for here? If you're seeing my request.
I, we gave you what we have to give you, the memo we have to give you.
But from when I talked to Jamie, it's my understanding there are additional records.
No, I told you, there was no other records, only what is.
No other records, well, then, why did she go on like all this? Why am I, why do I get that response?
I don't know, she's the solicitor.
Well, she's looking for you.
I, yeah, I get that, but that's her response, not my response.
Well, it's on a township letterman, it's signed by the township secretary, and there's no mention of the solicitor.
Isn't that where you're getting that response?
I think I've covered that, me giving you everything that.
You're getting two documents.
Right.
And you're going into a meeting in October, and to me, those two documents are things that are available to the public. You can go out there and just read the Municipal Authorities Act, but yet the board paid the solicitor to copy the Municipal Authorities Act. And I don't know what she billed you for it, but it takes some initiative on the local level here, too. And there's information out there really. So, so is that all that is going on? It's just the letters from the board members and the one letter from the solicitor.
That's it?
Yeah. Well, why did Jamie tell the solicitor, even Jamie could've told me that? You went to the solicitor and paid for this letter.
I believe that Jamie did tell you that, and then you have been in.
Jamie told me that when I came down with the letter.
But you didn't accept that as an answer, correct?
Well, right here it says, no, this was in response to the letter, it's written in the letter, and I'm sure we read it. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the township has identified records responsive to your request. So I came down and I asked Jamie, what records did you invite? Am I, am I allowed to here? That's what the solicitor wrote here. So, you know, from the, what initiated me to put this in, a whole month transpired since the previous one. And you're preparing for a meeting in October, and yet, you've done nothing to prepare for that meeting.
I got a question for you, Bob.
I'm talking to supervisor.
Okay.
You should write your questions to me.
Pardon me.
Okay, correct me, but the meeting we're gonna have in October with both boards, this is a workshop to the pros and cons. What, is it good for the community or is it bad for the community?
Regardless, when you go to a meeting, you prepare yourself.
Well, that's why we have the meeting scheduled to get the input back to us.
What do you have?
What do you wanna do in between the two months?
What, well, I think.
We know what's been going on.
There's other communities that have gone out and merged the authorities, I think you could glean knowledge from there. I went to Houston Township, and I told you about that at the last meeting, they did not dissolve, they only dissolved one authority, and they combined it with their water authority. Now here, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna go with that avenue, or are you gonna dissolve both authorities and create a new authority?
We're probably, it's until we get the workshop and get the input, we're not gonna say anything till we see, is it gonna better the community or not?
Well, I mean, if you're pursuing this, there must be some grounds that you believe it's gonna better. You know, this, this whole thing was initiated by the board of supervisors.
Well, I think they were.
And what do you perceive to be happening here, what do you perceive to be the benefit to the residents? You know, it seems like it just gets pushed off October all the time. You know, I think you should put down some bullet points to it, I mean, the authorities came to you and resold it to your inquiries, whether in favor or opposed. They brought something to the party. This board, you're gonna have a meeting in October, why don't you give them some advanced information? I don't even know that they got your letter from the solicitor.
Yes, they did.
I didn't think anybody responded from the authorities, did they?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yes, they did, and they did get the letter from the attorney, both sides.
Yes, they did.
Well, I think they're gonna talk about it to you at the meeting in October with my.
Well, they can't talk about it now, can you, Nancy?
Well, no, but they're not ready to talk about it right now.
And they've done no preparations to talk about it.
You don't know that, you don't know that they're not.
I put in an open records request, and there's nothing new.
That doesn't mean they aren't thinking.
There's nothing new.
They, that doesn't mean they're not thinking.
I mean, for the gravity of this whole thing.
It's scheduled for October, yeah, I think we discussed this at the last meeting as well, too.
Well, no, I didn't have this response. I was gonna just.
So we just discussed.
And the response, I do believe I just did, and nothing.
Anything else, other than this?
Only the other question I raised, what is the board envision? Are you going to dissolve both authorities and create a new authority? Are you going to go the avenue where one authority will assume the duties of the other authority?
I know we discussed that at the last meeting, I told you, in my opinion, the sewage authority isn't, it's already the J Township Authority. So we would just stick with that, so we wouldn't have to dissolve both and create new, we would use the name J Township Authority. Now, as far as board members go, we would have to decide how we wanna merge the board members, that's a discussion that has to be had. Um, I don't know how many of them are gonna wanna work through the merger, if it comes to that, so that'll have to be discussed at the workshop.
Okay, the other thing I tried to get, the articles from the corporation for Houston Township, they can't find it. If you go to the Carden State's website, they're like twenty-eight pages long. I mean, three articles in corporation, I've never seen any that long, you know, for local municipalities. And I don't know what's involved there. Uh, do you have any idea what might be involved?
No, not at the moment.
No, nobody knows, okay. I'm a little, I guess, concerned that nobody's doing any research on this and understands even the questions to ask, what alone would the answers be? Because I don't feel anybody's prepared for a meeting in October.
We're gonna have a meeting, that's the idea, a meeting and a workshop.
And one hour meeting, in one hour.
You're not ready.
And they don't even know what else to discuss.
We're across that bridge, you know?
Well, I suppose you're right, and I know Christine LeBosie sent you a letter, she asked if it'd be read at the meeting on visitor's comments. I don't see that on correspondence or anything.
We have my, I got it yesterday, my meeting packets are already done.
Okay.
We have a few.
Well, I was a little disappointed on the, the allocation.
Okay, Nancy?
Um, I don't have anything at this time.
I'd just suggest one thing, that, that meeting, I think you should at least have it in an hour and a half. I really do, I, I think an hour is just not enough time to really discuss anything. You're gonna have people asking questions, and it's gonna go back and forth, Bob already took twenty minutes with one person. So what's gonna happen at this meeting when you got the whole water and the sewers here? I, I think an hour is short, I leave it up to you guys to at least make it an hour and a half, send them both a letter to be here an hour and a half early. It's up to you guys, but you already see, he took twenty minutes of your time, that's one man, you get all the people.
I had another hour on that.
The reason we have the three-minute rule, it's not to cut people short, but it's to keep meetings from running two and a half hours for some basic business every month.
But you gotta start using it, you gotta start using it, it's up to you guys, but I'm just saying, it's, it's gonna run tough in an hour.
You wanna read, since he's on that subject, you wanna read Christine's letter, she asked me to be read.
This email from Christine LeBosie. I realize this, this is late to get this email in the meeting packets for above meeting, but my suggestion about how visitor's comments should be handled for future meetings. Each board member should be given a copy of any email visitor's comments in their meeting packet they receive before the meeting, so they can review it. Since it is a visitor's comment, it should be read in, in its entirety during the visitor comment period of the meeting. I expect this email or today to be read at tomorrow's meeting. I understand you are scheduling a public meeting for the water authority and sewage authority on October fifteenth at six p.m. at the township building to discuss the possible merger of two authorities. However, I understand to date, you have not given the public nor authority any info that you have received from your attorney about the general impact on this, of this on the community such as pros and cons, impact on the debt of each authority. This is not confidential info, but vital public info you should have already given out. Really, only one hour to discuss, to discuss such an important matter. How are you informing the public, especially the users, about this meeting? You are well aware that only a handful of people attend your meetings, so how will you get the word out? I suggest you place an article in the paper, not in the classified section, but in the regular section of the paper where it will be seen. It should also be placed in the Courier, the Daily, St. Mary's Paper, and the Valley News. You should also take the necessary action so each user and each authority gets a postcard informing them of this meeting. Now, to location of the meeting, it is inappropriate to have such an important meeting in a place too small to accommodate the public and also due to COVID-nineteen. When our school system was proposing a joining of our schools to St. Mary's, a public meeting was held at the fire hall in Burnedale. The garage doors were open so that all the public had plenty of space and could hear what was going on and could make comments or ask questions. I know because I was there. I hope that members of each authority will consider my thoughts above that relate to them and take some appreciation, appropriate action before October fifteenth. So this process is done fairly to the people of J Township, thank you, Christine LeBosie.
And I'll just comment that, that this is the first meeting, it's not like we're gonna go into this meeting for an hour and, and make a decision at our, at our meeting. That's not at all what's happening, this is a workshop, that's what we're talking about, pros and cons, entries. We're, we're not gonna have a one-hour meeting and then jump into our October meeting, make a decision, say, man, this is happening, without any of the information, okay? I'm personally gathering information on my own, just like you're doing, Bob, I would encourage these two guys to sing, so, and same with the boards, I mean.
Well, I've shared mine, why don't you share yours?
I've shared some of mine with you, too, as, as far as I'm gonna share it without other input, for me.
There you go.
Yeah, transparency.
That's what I go for.
Okay. Jim?
Uh, several questions. First one is, if you're gonna have the water and the sewage and the supervisors here, and you're going by COVID restrictions.
We're gonna be on that side, we're gonna open the doors up for the people. Well, we're gonna have all the boards inside, and hopefully it don't rain.
Okay, uh, that's fine, my next question is, next year's budget, Burnedale roads are atrocious. Is anything in the budget for next year on fixing the Burnedale roads?
No, the upper side of town there?
The upper side, yeah.
No, I've, I've actually priced it out twice over the last few years to get the base work done there. Um, it's actually only about twenty thousand dollars worth of base work, and we have that kind of money sitting around, and I have mentioned that it's a good idea to start looking at that in the spring. Get some base repair down and a new top on those where they had all sank in there from sewer lines. It's been patched and filled multiple times, but it's. But I think the last quote we had was like nineteen, almost twenty thousand dollars, just come in and mill out what's there and pack it and base it, and then, that wasn't putting a top on it. That was just to do the base repair. But, yeah, it's something that, that I would like to see done, you know, but we haven't gotten that far in planning yet.
The township broker could probably do most of that.
Uh, not the, not the, well, I mean, we could cut it out, but it's gonna take a lot longer with what we have to work with as opposed to somebody coming in to do it.
I make it up with code enforcement officer, have you advertised for it, have you assigned somebody?
It's on the agenda here.
Yeah, it, the advertisement's been out for what, maybe ten days? Um, nobody's come forward yet.
Where's that at?
Really, oh, really, yeah.
I didn't see it anywhere online.
That's it. Good? That's it. Mr. Wonderleaf?
Wonderleaf, not Wonderland.
Wonderleaf, okay.
Uh, I only have a, a couple of brief things to say, one is, like, with the bank closing. Uh, my son, who lives in Maryland, who owns a home in Forest, and he pays his bills direct deposit to deposit bank there for a sewage run up. Now, if they're moving out of town, okay, whatever you made, he can pay that from Maryland, you know?
He's probably gonna have to put it in the mail, unfortunately, you know, I mean, direct deposit, I don't know if the authorities are gonna have something that's, that, that, or not. And if they're gonna stay with First Home and Walgreens, if somebody does come to town, so far.
He can pay online, direct deposit bank, currency, or wherever it happens to be.
Right, right, yeah, but.
If, if, if the sewer authority still goes, but then went currency, I don't know.
I don't know if the authorities do direct deposit. We don't have anybody set up direct deposit for bill, I don't want anybody to know, so it comes to the bank, maybe somebody on the bank end is doing that.
Yeah, if you use the bank online, like, that's what I do, I go to my bank.
Oh, you do it like that?
Online and pay it, and they send it to the, you do, to everybody.
Okay, and you do the authorities that way?
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
We had discussed a few things at our meeting, about maybe getting a, a check reader here for the secretary, or approaching you guys about a drop box, but with the fence, you know, I mean.
Yeah, that's another issue, the fence, I mean, we are open at least eight hours a day, and later on Thursdays, but, um. Check readers, I've heard a few businesses say they were offered them for free, not everybody's been offered them, it's just something to keep in mind if.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, that, we had discussed that at our meeting, and, you know, also about the October meeting, so that was, you know, that was all brought up at our meeting.
That's the only downside, too, is, is the cash payments, and I know that they, they still receive cash payments, and now you. And now you get, if you're sitting on cash, then no banking, you know what I mean, that's, may have to get the policy of no cash payments, but cash is better than bounced checks. But that's, we did put some theories together at our meeting about this, but...
Anything else, Jim?
Yes, sir, I was going to ask about the, your, uh, like, the Jay Township Fire Department, okay? Uh, it's very Jay Township Fire Department. You know, those fellows go out there and risk life and ruin forever, okay? And a dedicated member of that fire company stays on there for years and years and years. And I was wondering if there was any way that, because you guys have a defined benefit program, uh, for your ventures, okay? Is there any way that a senior member of the fire company could become part of that pension plan? You know, I mean, after so many years of service to be invested in, but, uh, to see if that, you know, because it's a, uh, a funded, defined benefit program, I was just wondering why that couldn't be, uh, I mean, I give every year, I give money to the Fireman's Relief Fund, but that's, I'm sure not gonna help every, every, every little, every little farm or not, you know what I mean?
Right.
And even if it's only a couple of hundred dollars, but a month and every time, that could mean definitely steak and noodles, you know what I mean, so...
Yeah, I mean, as a volunteer fireman, they can't participate in it, I, I don't disagree with you, they should be given something, I mean, like, tonight they're out on a bomb threat call, and what they're asked to do, but, um, there's just, and it's not defined benefit plan either, it's just a lump sum, uh, that they get upon retirement, so it's not like a X amount of dollars a month that they're saving. You regard us, the fire hall couldn't participate through township. We can't, we couldn't even put Water Authority, Sewer Authority on there, move up in that a few years back, you know?
Yeah, I, I know that that is a separate entity, but I'm thinking if the fire company, if they, because it's, you know, uh, part of the township, I mean, if, if they, if they, uh, law underwritten or something like that, the township usually does that for them.
Right, we do that for the Water and Sewer Authority as well, so, I mean, it's still, they're still separating the fire hall, uh, separately from township.
I just wanted to figure out, find out, why we couldn't do something to help those boys out, you know what I mean?
Good, thanks for the coffee, though, yeah. Just appreciate it, thank you.
That's it?
Peace.
Have a good one.
You ready for me?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't really have it, I got a couple of questions on the, on the bill.
In the back?
Yeah, uh, I'm Ray, or my wife, and we've been living on Caladonia Pike for more than twelve years, and we just have one question, why, why, why was the name changed? It's always been Caladonia Pike. And I don't think, uh, if, uh, people that aren't familiar with the area, they're never gonna find Caladonia Pike.
Caladonia Pike? It's Kane, you're on Kane though, is that, is that what you're asking, what?
No, it's, it's always been, no, we're not on Kane, we're on Caladonia Pike. We've always, it's always been, I got the map right here, it's always been Caladonia Pike.
When the nine-one-one addresses went in, that Kane Road is from the highway back to Coons, well, to the railroad tracks, I suppose, where that road is.
Why would it be on the map, on all the maps?
Uh, depending on what map you're looking at, I mean, if you look at this ATV ordinance, as we were looking at the other day for these guys, the street names have all, a lot of them changed at the time of the nine-one-one addresses. I mean, there were a lot of different names on the maps. And then, the county, I assume, had final say in that, uh, to the nine-one-one address.
Andrew.
I wasn't here.
Oh, not Andrew, uh, not my great, he was the guy in charge.
He was the guy in charge of writing the names up.
He was the guy who entered the name.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that was long before my time, but that's where a lot of them changed. Like, this was Jackson Hill up here, right, you know?
Yeah.
And now it's, uh, rebooted. So it just, a lot of the names changed, if you look at some of these old maps that are on the wall, you'll see a lot of name changes. But that has been Kane Road, and it was an issue to the people that lived there when it did change.
Well, and, and, but see, it was Kane Road at one time, and then they changed it back to Caladonia Pike. Now they changed it back to Kane Road, and why, why is that?
It's always been Kane Road as far as nine-one-one addresses go, I don't know if the signs at the end of the road ever changed.
That's, when they, when they changed it, the nine-one-one time, it was Caladonia Pike from five fifty-five all the way to the Orange Township line.
Okay.
And when nine-one-one came, they said, the main road, this is not where their works, because we argued about it same over here in Redwood. Because that was a straight through thoroughfare, they said that's gonna be Kane Road, Caladonia Pike's gonna go off of it.
Right, it was, decisions like that were made at that time, and then, why not by the township?
Yeah, had nothing to do with the township.
Right.
Okay, right, that's all I learned.
Yep, and maybe the street sign didn't get changed right away, or, you know?
Many years later?
It very well could be, you know what I mean, that's, I wasn't here when that whole thing transformed.
Well, actually, actually, the planning commission went around and said what signs had to be changed back then.
It is a part of the, the county history, Caladonia Pike, it was Caladonia Pike, probably way before Kane's were here.
What, what? It was Caladonia Pike all the way to...
It was a stagecoach.
All the way there, yeah.
The only, the only one address is just to get the ambulance to your house, right? So you're on this straight stretch which is Kane, and then when you turn onto the dirt section of the pipe, then you're on Caladonia Pike. It's just firemen, ambulance, police officers, it's just a safety thing, you know? We realize it was always the Caladonia Pike, long before Kane's was there, but that isn't...
Why were we not notified? I mean, we, you don't know.
Do you, what's your, do you have a mailing address there?
Yes.
Yes, it's Caladonia Pike.
All of us on Caladonia Pike have mailing addresses.
Your mailing address should coincide with your nine-one-one address, I don't know why.
It used to be rural route, from rural route one and bars, whatever, and then it was, this argument came up, and now argument, discussion.
Well, maybe we'll have to look it up somewhere to find out if you're right, and we're all have the wrong sign hanging out there, I don't know.
It is Caladonia Pike.
Right, but I, we can check into it, but I know your address, I know where he's live.
Yeah.
And if your address is Caladonia Pike, that, it shouldn't be, it should be Kane, according to nine-one-one, you know, but...
How long ago did they change your address, honey?
Right.
How long ago did they change your address?
From the rural route?
Mm-hmm.
It's been many years, so it was after the nine eleven thing.
Yeah. So this is nothing recent, huh?
It's recent because they put the road sign up.
Yeah.
Kane Road, there was a Caladonia Pike road sign up there, and now it says Kane Road.
How long ago did they do that?
Just recently.
Two or three weeks ago.
Oh, really?
Or maybe just a couple of months, I don't know.
Well, when the trees, there were some trees falling down, and, and the power all went out and stuff, and that, I guess it maybe hit the sign, the Caladonia Pike sign, and now it says Kane Road.
They replaced it with the Kane Road sign.
Yeah. I think it's been Kane Road since the transition, I don't know.
Not, not according to these?
No.
No.
No, it hasn't, it, it never had, it never was, till they checked, till those trees fell a few weeks ago.
Well, I'll ask the guys if they changed the signs recently.
Yeah, this is, five fifty-five does say Kane now.
Should that be right?
I thought it only could.
Well, I know, but...
No, I, I changed it, I changed it to Caladonia Pike there.
Never did, never did.
I may be wrong on that intersection, but that intersection might be Kane Road at the start of Kane.
At the start.
I don't remember, but I mean, that's been a long time.
We'll look into it, if it's marked wrong, then it's as simple as order the sign, but...
Because we'll have to change our, our address.
That's why...
Well, that's why I asked what your address was, because I know, you know, where you live there.
Yeah, it's always been...
I'm thinking Kane don't start till you bring...
Till you, till the just, the dead end.
See, I, I, I can't answer that for sure, because there was a big hoopla about putting a stop sign on Caladonia Pike Road.
Yeah, they were arguing, well, people were...
Years ago, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I just remembered the argument about the stop sign. Because, we had, the same deal went on over here at Redwood, where we had to put the sign right term only, remember?
Yeah, and it's at the top of the hill.
Right at the top of the hill.
And the darkness...
And that was actually done...
And the darkness, those guys said that they, they wondered why they stopped signing on this side of the road. Like, they, like, keep it just there.
Coming out like from Coons' back.
Yeah, and that's, listen, I'm pretty sure that's where the sign was originally. And I don't know what the big hoopla was, I mean, that's just been too long ago.
Yeah, I was gonna do some digging and looking for it, but if it's as simple as changing the sign, we can do that.
These, these folks would know because they, we see the sign every day, more than anybody.
You're right.
Okay, we will get a hold of the road for a minute. Take care of that. Okay. Dunning, Gary, you're good?
Yep.
Okay, okay, let's move on, uh, approval of the bills, everyone will look at the list of the bills. What else?
Did you have comments?
I have any. You're good, okay.
I got a couple of questions on the bills, then. One of them, uh, uh, I'm not picking a rough one, a rough one, what the heck was, did we have sewage work, or?
What number is it?
Nine.
About half weeks. I know you're...
S E O.
I, I mean, S E O, I, I just don't know, I mean...
It's a pass. It's a pass. They pay here, and then she has to pay rough.
Oh, I know, I'm just asking what was for, was it for unlot subject, or was it for repairs?
Yeah, it's all unlots, unlot subject tanks, right? Her test thing, she had, he sends an itemized invoice with it.
Okay.
Yeah, right, he gives you a breakdown, then you double it for it.
Okay, oh, and I'm just, you know, I mean, because you don't see a lot of S E O stuff anymore.
No.
And the other one is Foster Wineland, second figure.
Yeah, they did all the filters changed on that new backhoe, and...
That was the first service down on it, so I made that.
It's still under water, too, isn't it, right?
Not for routine filters.
Service still changing.
Quite a nightmare from what they, from what the brands told me to, because they were good with them and watched them so they could do it themselves, and there's changed filters and now they're plastic, instead of metal. They were, we had them doing the first service, and the guys would be here to know how to do it, because there's a couple, difficult to get at filters there. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question, yes. For those who believe it should be called Kane Road, in your own meeting agenda here on your number nine, C and B, the Caladonia Pike Bridge.
It is called, it is called the Caladonia Pike Bridge, because it gets inspected, and that's what the listing of it is. We're not disagreeing with you that it was the Caladonia Pike, we're just telling you that something changed there in nine-one-one address, and we're gonna look into it.
It was almost twenty years ago.
Oh, I agree, but I...
Yeah, I mean, it's acknowledged.
Maybe they just put the wrong sign down when the trees came in.
It very well could be, but I...
Yeah, that's the right thing, having open...
They have to, or they're out of control to change.
No, you gotta do it for all the reasons, yeah, right, you'll check it, right.
It's called county control, it's not...
Okay, any questions on the bills, other than peace, the motion approval of the bills?
I'm thinking the motion to approve the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion secured, approval for the bills. Okay, prayers are...
Balance and journal fund, as of August twentieth, was one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars seventy-one cents. Balance as of September seventeenth, was one hundred seventy, as of four hundred twenty-one dollars thirty-four cents. State fund, balance as of August twentieth, was one hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars thirty-eight cents. Balance as of September seventeenth, was one hundred forty-one dollars, two hundred, one hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-six ninety-nine. Plate at the home as of September seventeenth, was fifteen thousand, nine hundred ninety. Capital reserve, as of September seventeenth, was one hundred twenty-one, one hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-three. State fund, balance as of September seventeenth, forty-four cents, one hundred fifteen. Journal fund, C D, balance as of September seventeenth, was eighty-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. And the total deposits for the month were ninety-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars fourteen.
Question. Do you get interest on your pliget and your capital reserve? And your CDs and your, you know, your journal fund CDs?
Um, yeah, well, there, there's, I don't know if there's anything on that pliget. We opened that pliget account when Sentax came in, they, that's where they wanted the money to be deposited, and then they, now, since Perheimer took over like a year later, we moved most of that money out of there, we left that open for the option to have the pliget. But I think that number has stood the same for as long as I can remember. But the capital reserve does get some, some interest, not much, and the CDs are a joke. I think we were at point five percent the last time we were doing them, the best as where the market was at.
Yeah, but then, how about now?
Uh, well, they're not mature yet, they're five years, to get to half percent, we had to go five years the last time.
So what's...
But they should be coming due in the near future, I'm not sure exactly the date.
I guess that's why I asked, because I see interest on the others, but you never see any on the others.
Yeah, we kept pliget open at the time in case we wanted to use it, but we haven't used it. There are some other options with them for investment, but we've never really pursued it. We may, we may have online banking stuff, that may be an avenue towards a Surety Bank last year, you know what I mean?
Take some of your money and start one.
Okay, let's move on to the correspondence.
Jay Township, orange, twenty minutes, Jay Township, so it's thirty minutes, and I'll come to the mission room in thirty minutes.
Okay, we're going to go to the road maintenance, equipment maintenance reports. Any questions on the road maintenance or equipment?
I can't see that, I have to ask you a question. How'd you make up with that so under your model?
Uh, it's doing really well. Couple little, couple little leaks, you know, just, you know, just because of the view, but, just some leaks and whines, but that's about it. Ran it all summer, and they liked it.
Cool. I was curious how you'd react to that, you know, it's seventy-two hundred hours, well, I don't know, you know, I'm just curious how you mean that.
Okay, we can go into old business, flood issues, curtsy, wrong?
Nothing, nothing really new there at this time, um, Eli's coming to put some signs up next week, um, just on the sites that we completed, some signage that's required with the grant money. We got the grant money, get it into deposits there. Um, he has the opportunity to get some Western Kentucky Conservancy money for that site above Huttons. Um, that, I think it's an Anderson that owns it in there. He wanted to know if we could make contact with them. Ben Koppel is the only guy I know that said he could get in contact with them, so I'm gonna get in touch with him, because Eli just asked me this the other day. They'd go up and sign something, but it wouldn't be like that big, all-encompassing thing that they had to sign with Fish and Boat, that she didn't want to sign. And it wouldn't put any burden on them, so, he said if, if we could sign that, then, uh, he could get the money put together by next summer to get that site, and it's a hero, so... I'm working on that, but...
That's actually roving pretty good, isn't it?
It, it's a mess, but you know, a lot of the trees and root balls and stuff gathered up there, and it's actually the river's water where it's supposed to and naturally, but the next flood might push and turn all of that, and they...
You lost underground everything.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she didn't, she didn't want, and I don't blame her, the agreement with Fish and Boat was like six, seven pages of legal documents. She didn't want to sign it. And this is only like a one-page, real simple, here's your permission, and we'll fix it type thing, so, we're gonna work on that. And that's all we have right now, he's putting something together to apply for the next round of funding for the other site that we outlined in that study at the back and beginning of this too, so...
Okay, that's one, combining the water and sewage boards, which we did discuss already. Okay, let's Caladonia Pike Bridge.
And he has not completed that grant yet, due until the thirtieth, but, let's... I'm assuming he'll have to sign something before he submits it, they'll ease, they're working on the grant application for that. Yeah, follow up with him, because he did say the end of the month.
Didn't the understructure need some repair in that range?
That's what the grants are for, exactly, it's actually, uh, V C D multi-modal grant.
So they're gonna weld plate either way, or how they're gonna...
Well, we're, we're attempting to, we're attempting to get the grant for, what'd you say, five hundred thousand, I had all that information last month, to kind of redo the whole thing. Um, when I say the whole thing, I mean... Um, when I say the whole thing, obviously the bad under, underneath. Milling off the top and replacing the top and approaches and things like that. Now, if we only get partially funded, then we'll do only what's necessary, because there's.
To get it off the pole.
They waived the match this year, V C E D, and I assume because of all the things going on in the world, so we're attempting to get some money.
Start with the worst stuff first, and then fix it.
Well, that's the goal, and add forty to fifty years to it. Replacement's two point three to two point six million, so we're trying to give it some more, some more light.
My lawyer on that bridge subject today, you guys aware of that red hook yet?
No, and I talked to these guys about it, but I'll remind them again.
Get it before it freezes here.
Yeah.
Get Rick down here with a fire truck. Take him a half hour on each side.
You go away. Get the fire chief, he'll no longer in office.
You can all go.
You're right, I'm good.
They're, they're so trusty, they get.
Yeah. Okay.
Somebody has to hold those.
Let's. Ordinance update.
Okay. Uh, D C N R Caladonia Pike Road, you never heard nothing back from the other side of it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over. Um, no, they have the, they have the paperwork, and their lawyers are reviewing it, and that might take forever.
Okay. Now we're moved to the ordinance update. And Jamie does, it's on Career Link. Uh, I did, I missed the meeting, but Jeremy Guy did meet with Russ Brown the other day, one or two things.
Yeah, just what we should be looking at, possibly paying somebody, the amount of hours involved in a typical call, um, processes for going to the magistrate. Um, he informed us on how we can, uh, how we enforcement officer can write their own ticket and or file a civilian criminal complaint, I think it was called. I have it all written down in there, but, uh, um, he, he suggested forty-five dollars an hour is a month ago in rate for somebody with experience. He also suggested if you can find somebody that has a background in law enforcement, retired, they make a good, uh, person for the position, and al- also, what we already kind of discussed here, is somebody from outside the community is always, are always better than somebody from amongst us when you're dealing with these kind of things, but. Um, he said he, he would be available for phone calls or even to come and help on the first one or two. Um, just to, just to help train and get somebody going, but if we can't find somebody with previous experience.
Now, we'll just see if we get anything back from having on Career Link. Okay, uh, let's move on, and I skipped the bill. Three one.
I apologize, fellas, I'd have gave you chairs if I thought it was gonna take this long.
We're fine.
Okay, from Buck Hill, excavator sixteen hundred ton, one B limestone delivered a stock pile, twenty-three ninety-five per ton, sixty day delivery.
Twenty-three what, Rick?
Ninety-five.
Twenty-three ninety-five.
Uh, this is from Glenn O. Hall Baker. Uh, one B sixteen hundred ton, delivery price twenty-six seventy-five. Hold goods through until the end of March twenty, call me for delivery. Hold goods through today until the end of March twenty twenty-one, twenty-six seventy-five, Hall Baker. Uh, Valmer tar and chip, one B limestone, delivered sixteen hundred tons, more or less one B lime, within sixty days, a bid of one date for twenty-four fifty-two a ton.
Twenty-four dollar out through two. The chief has this.
Buck Hill.
I'm not sure what I thought. I'll make a motion for Buck Hill, twenty-three ninety-five a ton.
Second?
Third second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried to Buck Hill. Okay, takes care of that. Okay, we're gonna move on to the new business. Assessment permit, Roseanne Morris pool building for storage. Uh, Roseanne Morris, eight sixty-nine Cleveland Street, Wheatville. Uh, residential, it's a thirty by forty front building for storage, no water service, no wastewater.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessment permit.
Second?
Top.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, assessment permit for Roseanne Morris. And we move on subdivision. Uh, Kathy and Vicki all father subdivision, two lots, eleven B, count up.
Got an update, Rick, about that, that's on this.
Don't you have to give a subdivision module and fix my property and manage everything?
Yeah, we have, um, non-building declaration, waiver, non-building declaration. Yeah, it already goes to the county, that's what I was looking for. Well, it usually goes to the county before it comes here.
Yeah, that's signed off, but it's the planning commission already.
Yeah. Signed off with no comment. They divided it into two, or they divided it into three, that's all.
Well, one and one, two.
Uh, they're just separating like pretty much the road, the Caladonia Road. Yeah, it's probably on both sides of Caladonia Road, and you're separating one side off from the other.
Smaller must be great, but this house is something.
That's where his house is, that's, yeah.
Yeah, the one this big.
Yeah. The hillside. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Second?
All's in favor? Aye.
Motion carried, approve the subdivision.
Find out whatever you want, here.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we move on to the resolution.
You want me to cut it small enough?
Okay.
It's for Berkenheimer, um, like, Jerry, what is that tax that I get? From people working? Sorry, um, they had to update the name, like, Jay Township, out county hereby appoint secretary treasurer as its authorized reputation to make requests upon receiving of tax information. It's just to kind of put tax.
They're gonna, they had, they had Debbie still listed as secretary treasurer. They just wanted to pass a resolution that lists the name, the title, secretary treasurer, instead of an individual name, so we don't have to make that change.
Yeah, that's for wait.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution to make that change to secretary treasurer.
No, I missed that. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, junkyard license renewal, you do have one for nobody?
Yep.
Former gap location.
Yeah, they, they paid the.
Paid it.
Yeah.
They paid the fee.
Make a motion to approve the junkyard license renewal for nobody.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're doing ordinance ninety-nine F two amendment, that's for the ATV ordinance.
And it's, it already is a resolution, according to, according to the ordinance?
Yeah, and I also called Randy too over there at Fox to see if that's exactly how that goes, and he said, yeah, absolutely. You already have the ordinance in your township for ATV roads, so you don't have to go through all that. You already have the ordinance. All you're doing is maintaining that ordinance to add that section, that section, for the, what do you call it, by a resolution.
I would suggest that we need to pass the resolution if we want to do that, from Washington Street, just the intersection of Washington Street and Carter? Or do you want to include the whole road? That's the decision that needs to be made. I mean, we already know we want to. We've been talking about this trail coming through there for how long, so we're gonna have to catch that piece. The only decision to make, whether you're gonna do the complete street, or I suppose if somebody's on the upper end of it and illegally traveling to the, to the, uh, ATV trail.
I mean, if they, say if they would come down Taylor on their own, say if they lived up on that side of town and crossed right over to Washington, they'll be on a dress and native.
Right.
Right.
Well, I don't even know if it's Taylor, that's what I mean. I don't know how many streets are omitted from.
That side, the other side of Burnell there, that's why you, you know that Washington was not at the time, because all those streets are not either. There's no access.
Because you gotta cross the highway, so there's no.
Correct. Correct, so they were, you guys did the ordinance back in whatever, ninety-nine or something?
Yeah.
Those were not in that ordinance either, so that's why you kind of knew that whole area was not. You know what I mean? Even though they traveled. Right, right, we all know that.
Yeah, and I guess if we just do it again from the intersection of Carter and Washington to the end of Washington to connect to the trail, that's better than opening up people coming off the highway into there, so that probably my opinion, the best way to go is to do it from there, from right across and down for the fourth.
From the bridge on to.
Well, you're gonna have to go to the nearest intersection anyway, but I would say that was Carter, right? And we just got.
Carter.
Carter is the street right above Davis, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's at Carter, but I mean.
Yeah, the crossing's gonna be longer.
Are you gonna, here's where you're gonna run in? You've got people coming off the old grade, you've got people coming down Old Burnell, and they're turning in there anyway.
They are, but, you know, again, they're not.
But they're traveling illegally to get that far, I guess.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I guess.
But once they get there, they're free and clear, I guess, is what we're saying.
You have any residents?
Complete street Washington.
Any other residents in that area that were utilized, so.
Right, if, and that's up to you guys.
That's right, you got two more.
Yeah, only, yeah, it's a door.
You got, uh, Sean Weedo out, you know. Andy Levesque from the whole street.
Bob Carter. Bob Carter.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean.
Somebody could unload your machine by Bobby's.
Yeah.
Traveling, I mean.
I think you should open up that whole street, it'll cause a lot of bores.
All right, let's, let's.
That was my thought.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to type it up.
Do we have any, did we pass any, other than this one, what was this one that we just passed? Twenty, that one, that two, three, four? I'm gonna put a number on it. Anyhow, I will make a motion that we pass the resolution adding Washington Street totally. I'll try to get to the ATV ordinance.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, open up Washington.
You guys will need a copy of that from the minutes?
Yeah.
I assume the, the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, but.
You have the rest of the information, right?
Yeah, only because we happen for the grants and stuff.
Yeah, right.
Could I interject one comment?
Mm-hmm.
Back to what Fran said about making that meeting longer and sending out notices. Why don't we just leave it at six, like it would have been, and run it however long? And then just have the regular meeting, we'll have to go later, that's all. Then you don't have to retry and tell everyone.
I don't know if you want to run it however long, you got a cabinet.
Well, I mean, you know, I think that's.
I mean, I don't know that having them both on the same night is the best idea.
Yeah.
Especially with a guy sitting in front of the room.
That's true too, that's true too.
I think too, I mean, I think all of us, we're listening to anybody, but if it's just gonna go over and over, we're gonna cut the person off. See how people get.
Well, I just, instead of trying to send out a whole new time and everybody not get confused, why not just keep it that time and the township meeting will have to be a little later. I mean, that's, which is the idea.
Yeah, they're all advertised, I mean, so that's, I don't know if you advertise this workshop yet?
No.
Okay.
Not, not presented yet.
I think, aren't they, I'm hitting it, Jerry, when you said the same night, you guys should have a meeting with those boards separate. Uh, and where you can sit down with them, and then if the public needs to be informed, then you can call.
You always have to have, unfortunately, if the three of us sit down and, and all of them sit down, we have to allow the public. And I say that unfortunately, because then that allows, it allows things to drag on for hours on end when workshop to see where we can go. It's not gonna be that. By the time everybody sits down and has their say, I'll, I'll guarantee it.
Well, how about.
I always say that, because I've been here for over ten years, I know how these things go.
How about, if it's not enough sand or not enough information, you're more than welcome to come to the sewage meeting, and I suppose the water meeting at their meeting times, the three of you.
Right.
And carry on.
Right. So then. I mean, it's just a starting point. I think that's what we're trying to make, I don't want Christine's letter, or or even lost comments and think that we're gonna sit down for one hour and just trudge ahead and make a decision that night, that's not what's happening.
It's a workshop.
No, that's not what's happening.
That's not my impression.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I think that was Christine's.
Impression a little bit, you know, is.
Because I think an hour, you're gonna have to have multiple meetings.
Yeah, this is, this is just the start of it.
Right.
Workshop.
Right, I think we all are in agreement on that. It's just that we tried to set this up between the boards, and this was just, uh, all right, today, this is the day we're gonna do it, what we decided last month, and that's what we're doing, so to get the, the ball.
Okay, so we're good on, uh, resolution?
I'll have, I'll type it up.
We're signing it?
All right.
Okay, Don and Gary?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. I'm Simon, the manager.